I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Betsinger.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
And trustee Marisak.
Here.
All right, we're all here this evening. Public participation, the first item, public comment, this is two-minute opportunity for any member of the public that wants to address the board, anybody? All right. Hearing none, go ahead and move on. Item B is a proclamation for Youth Art Month. In the essence of time, I'll skip the formal reading and entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Marisak.
Yes.
All right, that's approved, thank you. Under the consent, we have two items this evening, minutes of the village board meeting of February 10th, and the accounts payable through February 20th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And second, call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
I carry six zero, thank you. Under items for separate action this evening, we have ordinance 1876 granting a special use for motor vehicle services at 1335 Douglas Avenue, Suite G. This is second reading, we spoke about it at the last meeting, we approved the plan commission recommendation, and then since trustee Marisak was not at the last meeting, we added that to items for separate action. Does anybody have anything additional to add? If not, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
I carry six zero, thank you. Item B is Resolution 2020-001 authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding regarding bike sharing services with the Kane County DOT. And Jared.
Thank you very much. Before you this evening is the continuation of an item that we've talked about a couple of times, a bike share agreement. So in January, the village board saw a draft of the resolution and wanted a little more information regarding the service agreement that Kane County was at the time working on. So we have had that service agreement sent to us, it has been reviewed by the village attorney. There are a couple of items that we want to discuss a little bit more with Colony, the vendor. So we are recommending approval pending village attorney final review as we do want to discuss a few items with Colony. They're very minor in nature though, but there are things that the board was interested in at the last meeting. With that, the request is for four bikes to be starting the program with four bikes. So that is $1,500 a bike, that budgeted item is commented on on the cover sheet. And then we would, we are proposing to place the logos on those bikes. So the $6,000 is an annual item. There's also budgeted $1,000 for a bike rack improvement here to the village hall. And that's something that we would do some more research on if approved and in the next budget year here.
All right, any questions for Jared?
Yes, I have one, and I appreciate your time this morning on the phone. We do have the ability to add additional units, i.e. bikes, if we see that this takes off really well and the four bikes are out consistently, we can add more.
Yes, we can.
The agreement calls for $200 per bike rack, per bike from Colony? What is that for? Do we know what that's for? I don't know, I don't understand that fee.
If I'm not mistaken, that was if you went with their bike racks.
Their, okay.
I believe that's the case because they offer them, but you do not have to go with theirs, was my understanding.
Thank you.
Under background and policy, it says however due to the short term of the agreement, a single season, the village's most effective recourse would be opt-out in the future. Could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so that is in regards to a couple of the items that the village board raised concerns with, such as the location of any legal action being in Iowa rather than here in Illinois because Colony is a company out of Iowa. We looked at that and we do intend to attempt to negotiate with Colony to see if we can get that changed. If we cannot, we feel that, and if we have a problem in the future, you know, we feel that going with this agreement would be recommended, but if we did have an issue in the future, that that would be a choice of recourse.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yeah.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yeah.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify that resolution, the vote on that was subject to attorney review
as Jared stated at the beginning, just any objection to that?
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Moving on to item C this evening is award of a contract to Builders Paving LLC for the 2020 Infrastructure Road Program and Shared Youth Pass Project in the amount of $3.168 million. Director Wolf. Engineer Wallers.
So just to recap the bid request for approval, we advertised in January, bids closed on February 13th, we received two bidders. Both of them were qualified. The bidder was Builders Asphalt who's done work in the village on numerous times. And their bid price was $3,168,000, which is about six and a half percent under the engineer's estimate. So we're recommending approval of that contract at this time. Happy to answer any questions on that, and I do have some slides just to give you an overview of our current, this will be the last year of our 2020 program, so our last of our five-year plan. So I want to just do a quick recap and then, you know, we can continue forward, but so.
Yeah, sure.
So one thing that I think is stark in its form here is that after the village was able to get additional revenues for pavement rehabilitation, we saw a significant increase in the amount of road miles that we could do in any year. So if you go back from 2011 to 2015, you can see that we were averaging about one mile a year in roadway, and that was pretty much just using our MFT monies. When we were able to get the non-homeless sales tax added to our road program, we were able to significantly increase the amount of road miles that we can do. So right now, we have about 75 miles of pavement, and over the last five years, we've done about 35 miles of road rehab. So pretty significant increase, number of reasons for that, but I think we can safely say that the program's been a great success and, you know, hopefully going to carry that on into the next segment. So again, about five miles prior to, so one mile a year, and then after that, we were able to do about seven miles per year. So a significant increase because of that additional funding that we received. This is a map that shows all of the paving that we've done from 16 to 20. I know it's a little difficult to see, but you do have one at your desk, so I'm just going to kind of skip past that and move on to the 2020 roadway program, which is what we're considering for award right now. This is the area that we'll be doing, it's both the west side and the east side. It'll be the west side area of a couple of different subdivisions, and then on the east, it'll be the area where we're doing lead service line replacements right now, which is in the Marbury Manor area. We've got the list of our roadways, again, it's in your packet just to give you a flavor for the amount of streets that we're doing. So getting pretty good coverage, again, we're doing about, I think, nine miles or eight miles of roadways this year. The other thing I wanted to mention, we're also doing the shared use path that's going through the Stewart Sports Complex that connects Foxmore subdivision to the Stewart Sports Complex, so that was included in this bid. And we like to do that when it's practical, not always practical to do it that way, but this one worked out pretty well. I think as everybody will recall, we had some pretty significant delays negotiating with Commonwealth Edison to get through their easement, but we're moving forward, so that'll be constructed as part of our 2020 program as well. So, so all in all, I think, you know, it's been a successful five-year program. We will be bringing to you March 20th, at the March 23rd board meeting, the new draft of the new five-year plan. And then that'll be discussed on however many meeting nights it takes until we're satisfied with the new program. And then we hope to get that approved either April or May this year.
Awesome, and the idea is that we would then design 2021 stuff later on this year, this fall?
Absolutely, we would, right, we would bring back a Phase Two design contract so that we can again start in the summer, so we can get our work done. One of the things that's led to our, I think, a great deal of our success is getting our bids out so early in the year. And so we, you know, we always advertise in January and get our bids approved in February, so that's been a significant element here, and we'd like to continue that.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for engineer Wallers or staff?
I have one. Which Stacy Circle is it, do you know? It's a troubling street because it intersects with Lakewood in two spots.
Okay, you know, Doug, I'll have to find out exactly where it is, I can probably find out from the map, but yeah.
That's fine.
All right, is there a motion, this is item C.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
I carry six zero, thank you. Going along with that is item D, the PSA with EEI for construction engineering for the 2020 Infrastructure Road Program and Shared Youth Pass Project. Director Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. President. So yes, this, the agreement that is in front of the board tonight would be obviously for the subject that we just talked about. In front of us would be the construction engineering for this project. The amount is for $245,977. Staff is recommending the approval of EEI to oversee this year's construction project. If there's any questions, I'm happy to ask, answer those at this time.
Any questions?
So moved.
Go ahead.
Second.
Any discussion? All right.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
I carry six zero, thank you. Item E this evening is purchase of two new zero-turn mowers totaling $27,390. Director Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, before the board tonight would be, these would be replacement mowers for existing mowers that we currently have, set up in our vehicle and equipment replacement program. So the two mowers that we'll be replacing would then go to auction. Would come back to the board at a later date to add those items on for surplus to be able to get rid of those used mowers. The purchase of these mowers would be identical to what we brought to the board last year. So in total, the village public works department has a total of four zero-turn motors that are used for mowing properties that the village owns and also right-ofways throughout the village. The results that we had from the last two mowers we bought are, have been really good. We've seen a downtick in our maintenance because we upscaled those mowers a little bit from what we were historically buying. So therefore, we'd like to move forward with the purchase of two mowers, again, that are identical to the last ones what we brought. We would be purchasing these from Ducane Equipment out of Big Rock, which is the same place that we bought them from before. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
There you go. Second.
Any discussion? All right, call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And trustee Marisak.
Yes.
I carry six zero, thank you. Item F this evening is ComEd Energy Efficiency Program, Streetlight Fixer Purchase. Director Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. President. So before the board tonight is a, the agenda item for the purchase of the remainder, 574 fixtures, that this remainder amount would complete the entire village throughout. So this, what happened was when we came to the board with the original purchase last year of 194 fixtures, we developed a phasing program for our street lighting. So what we did in our, we identified three different phases. We've completed Phase One as of December 31st of last year and have received our incentive check back from ComEd, and then also have our annual rates, or I'm sorry, energy rates have already been adjusted according to Phase One. So we have since then introduced Phase Two and have been pre-approved by the ComEd approval, preapproval, and we've already begun replacing those lights. For Phase One, we did 127 fixtures. We purchased originally 194 fixtures as part of the item that the board approved last year. So we've been using that inventory as part of Phase Two. And we've also, in the intermediate, we've ordered some other additional lightings in order to keep the project going. So the 574 will be what we would need in addition to complete all three phases and totally complete the entire improvement of the LEDs throughout the village. So that is what staff is recommending so that we're able to capitalize on continuing to roll these programs out and keep our phasing moving along. Just to give a couple of highlights, the Phase Two incentive is right now, it's set to be, so this would be the check direct back to the village just for the installation of lights, which I want to point out that public work staff is conducting the installation of these lights, does not be done, not being done by an outside contractor, so therefore, we're seeing a cost savings there as well. But the incentive check that we would see back for Phase Two is $19,036.50. The Phase One check that we already received was $11,410.28, I believe. Sorry if I have the cents off a little, but I'm on the number. The annual savings that we would see in our energy reduction for Phase One is going to be annually $2,998.43, and then our Phase Two would be $5,002.28. We don't have the projected Phase Three yet, only because we haven't sent in for our preapproval. So once we would do that, then we would get that information sent to us and we'll know what our total overall reduction, our annual energy costs would be. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those this time.
Quick question, that initial savings of Phase One of $2,900 annually, and then Phase Two, $5,000 and change, is that an additional $5,000 and change? Or is that the 29 jumping up to $5,000 with the completion of Phase Two? Does that make sense, the way I phrase that question?
Yes, I believe it's additional, but I would have to check into that and get back to you.
Okay, no rush, I just, thanks.
So if I'm doing just a little bit of math here, which is kind of dangerous, it looks like, and I expect that you have a quote from the supplier for these hundred, whatever it is, 574 fixtures, that amounts to $267 each bulb. And it looks like we're getting reimbursed like 90 bucks per bulb. So that's that $200 really is our upfront cost. And it looks, I guess, like we're saving, 2,900 divided by 127, about 22 bucks a year, so it's like a 10-year break even is what it sounds like.
And that's pretty accurate with what ComEd has kind of proposed to us when we initially rolled out this plan, was about a 10-year reimbursement rate.
And the lifespan of the LED bulbs as far exceeds that, I was.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Lower maintenance.
Correct.
And then this also, does this assist us with our greenest regions stuff?
All right, perfect. Any other questions? Mark? Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Oh, he, I thought he coughed.
That's what I thought, I was sure it was a cough.
Sure, I thought he coughed.
I'm going to start, drowning coughs is a motion if you want.
Second.
All right, go ahead.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yeah, yes.
And trustee Marisak.
Yes.
All right, thank you, and I should state this, that I do appreciate the thought of having our public work staff install these because that would drastically throw off that break even. You know, doing this at our leisure, I know you talked about the storage of the light bulbs and, or the fixtures, so I really do appreciate you kind of doing that as time permits. So, sorry, I'm going to do the Arbor Day. Okay, with that, I'll move on to items for discussion. Trustee Guyer's requested that we move the Arbor Day discussion up to the first one just so you can get you out of here if you need to get back to work or plowing later. So with that, the Arbor Day Park Plan. See, we're really thinking of you and us, you know? Trustee Guyer, did you have something you wanted to kick off on this?
Yeah, sure, well, last year, the beautification committee was asked to get involved with the Arbor Day planning and celebration, and we quickly realized that we were running out of room to plant trees, and we had discussed with the board in the past of utilizing the area by the police department around the silo. Arborist Ed Pfaff is on the beautification committee, and we asked him to design something for placement of trees. And he reached out to his friend Amy, and she's really good at this, and so they plotted out the trees. Well, as part of this, they've also plotted out some additional enhancements. I'll let them discuss for you. Obviously, you know, we don't have any plans for any funds right now for this, but we just want to put this out there as an idea to see what the board thinks about it. So with that, Ed and Amy, if you'd like to present.
Okay, so the way this kind of started, as Dana mentioned, is Arbor Day is two months away from tonight. So we started looking at the park to decide where to put the trees and everything, but I saw that there was a greater opportunity in that park, especially with the trails connecting, that we could possibly enhance the value of the park by adding some other features. Primarily, one of the things being the silo is still out there, Stave Silo, that I've had a lot of guys that work with me and everything like ask me, what is it, what is it for? What is it for? And it's part of the history of the area, so I thought we should try to incorporate some education purpose to, like historically, what could go in that area? And then also kind of be improving the environment overall and helping out in other features, which Amy will talk about in a minute here. So basically, we did go through with the tree planting on the design, we have, the way I arranged the trees is we have several large anchor trees. And so they are, they will be the primary trees that we plant initially so that they start to get up a canopy above. And then as time goes by in a section, then we'll start to fill in in between them with intermediate trees, ornamental trees. So we'll try to, we're going to implement a lot of oak trees, some linens, which are also good pollinator trees. And oak trees really attract a lot of wildlife and everything for the area. And then we're also going to have some like ornamental trees that'll flower in the spring and bring more attention for people that are passing through to enjoy. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amy to explain the rest of her main part of the design, so.
First of all, thank you for welcoming me here, and thanks, Ed, for bringing this opportunity to me because I love plants, and that's why I became a landscape architect and became an arborist too, and how I met Ed. So the idea of this park, as Ed mentioned, was to expand upon the Arbor Day planting. And I took this as an opportunity, your heritage, the silo is such a unique landmark for Montgomery, and tying it into Montgomery's farming heritage. So then I thought, well, how could we incorporate that into a really cool design? Because Ed's like, this is a great site, and it's right across the street from the police department. So we got to make sure we keep sightlines open and everything else. And my grandparents were farmers, and I remember, you know, walking the fields a little bit. I was a girl, my brothers got to ride the tractors and drive the tractors, I didn't get to do that. But I did get to experience the farm and walk the land and seeing all the rows of crops, which, you know, as you drive around the countryside, you see the rows of, you know, corn, soybeans, and even the wheat. And so I thought, wouldn't it be cool and fun to develop a prairie, re-bring back the prairie, but in a stylized format, to echo or reflect the farming heritage? And so I developed the design incorporating lines of perennial grasses, keeping it low for safety and sightlines, and then overlaying that, if you could bring up the plan with the, where it's closer in. This one right here. Yeah, so then overlaying the grass rows, I am proposing to overlay that with different perennials, you know, natives and cultivars of our neighbors, native perennials, to give us some color and seasonal interest. And also, these perennials are going to invite butterflies and bees. And then I thought, wow, what a great opportunity for some interpretive signage. So then, you know, this is just some examples of signage that we can do. And, you know, they can be, we can attach them straight off onto the silo on the sides and then have some free sanding out there to describe native habitats, stormwater management practices, and even birds, butterflies, and bees. And, you know, you could even invite a local bee, you know, guy who likes to do bee and honey, you know, another opportunity for education. And then I was like, well, we got the plants, we got the bees and animals, natives, you know, wildlife coming in. Hopefully not too many, you know, raccoons and whatnot, they like neat stuff anyway. But how do we really make it inviting for people? So this, if you could bring this one up, Jeff, I was thinking, wouldn't it be nice to have a pergola there to invite people to come and sit and enjoy and actually experience the sounds of the birds flying by and the wind going through the grasses and the plants? And to create an opportunity for sitting and just staying for a while. So I echoed the circular shape of the silo and developed a pergola in walking paths. And I'm thinking what we should do is do the pathways in brick. You can make that, you know, fundraiser, or you can have saw the bricks and, you know, do some celebratory engraving on them as an option. I'd also like to propose that we incorporate, you know, you have the big boulders in front of the police station. We can bring those down in, around the silo for seating, so you can sit there also. And I think that's, let's see, what else are my points? Signage, overlay grasses, yeah, so that's pretty much it. Basically creating a nice welcoming, stylized prairie for your community.
Awesome.
Do you guys have any questions?
I have one more thing.
Oh, yeah.
Just to, we, there are, as far as, I don't know, budget-wise, we haven't gone through to figure out what the total cost would be. This would be something that would be done over a number of years. And I'm sure that planting one tree a year for the Arbor Day things I'll be planted pretty well before the final product is there where everybody can enjoy it. But that's one of the advantages of trees, is they kind of connect the past, the older trees, to the present, and then the newer trees we plant now go on into the future to connect all those communities together. But there are some opportunities for grants, come up quite often. There is one right now that is through ComEd, their Green Region Program. And if you think this might be a good idea, something we can pursue, I would start working on application for that grant. The max is $10,000, it's a matching funds grant, and maybe we could do a portion of it with that. It's a short timeframe because it's got to be in by March 11th, I believe, so. But we could probably make that date and get it in. So as part of this here, I wanted to find out, like, present the idea and see if you think it's something that we should pursue, or if you want to hold off on it, or whatever, so.
I like the idea, I like the plant material, I have a horticulture degree. My only thing is the boulders in front of the PD, I think, are to keep vehicles from going into the PD.
Oh, yeah, well, that's what. Oh, yeah, well, that's what.
We're close enough to Wisconsin, we can get more.
Yeah, no, that's what, that's what she meant, though, is just bring the concept down, reflecting off of the design concept, bring that element down into around the, around the silo.
There's nothing more fun than kids climbing on boulders, and, you know, jumping around, they can't really do that on benches, so by, you know, they're up at the police station, we can bring some more down from Wisconsin, and it's the Edenstone, or I assume of some sort, and just incorporate that, to make it so it's not all benches and formal, like, a little bit softer.
Awesome.
They're a little more durable, too.
Yeah, exactly.
So this is, this is perfect, this gives you kind of a roadmap for where to plant a tree a year when you have to, but then also something for beautification to price out kind of what the ultimate vision might cost, pursue grants, or find, or propose some funding mechanism to phase this in over however many years it takes.
Right.
But working towards a goal, I'm a proponent of planning, and with a plan like this, and a budget, I'm assuming that would be helpful for any grant application that you fill out, so. I like it. Any other comments?
I like it, too.
I'd like to hear some of the trustees say the genus and species for the plant material, other than that.
No takers?
I can name that plant in four syllables.
Alright.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Yeah, thanks for coming. Alright, so without objection, I kind of still want to go out of order, just so we can hammer, hammer out some of the other items before we get into our longer discussions this evening. We would like to propose that we move on to item D, which is the unincorporated water tap policy. We talked about this at length at our last meeting, I know Jeff has an updated memo in your packet for kind of what our policy could be going forward, and I don't know if you had anything else to add, or do you want to summarize?
No, I mean, I think there was, seemed to be agreement among the trustees last time about not requiring the road infrastructure fee, and really, the discussion came down to would we want to require the property to annex, or not require them to annex, so. That's where we.
I'm still of the opinion that I want them to annex.
What are the, if, as an individual homeowner, what are the steps to actually annex? I'm gonna, I guess, refer to our attorney. Like, how, what's the process look like? How long does it take? What's the cost that's involved with that?
There's different processes to annex to a village, the easiest process would be to petition the village to annex, in which case, it'd file a petition with the village clerk, and depending on what they were seeking with that annexation, it would go in front of the planning commission, depending, again, what they were looking for with annexing. And then, the village would then vote on whether or not to annex the property.
Are we charging them a fee to annex?
It suggested that we would waive that annexation fee in this instance, there is generally an annexation fee, yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Does there have to be an annexation agreement when they annex?
Just, just an ordinance, it doesn't have to be an agreement, per se, like, we're more used to annexation agreements for larger tracts of land, but an individual, as Brandon said, that wants to petition for annexation, would not need an annexation agreement, it would just be ultimately an ordinance by the village board after a recommendation from the planning commission.
Oh, it has to go through planning commission to annex, okay.
It has to go through planning commission because of matching up with a comprehensive plan, but then also a recommendation on zoning.
If I remember correctly from listening to the meeting, those that aren't contiguous with the village, now, we would do a pre-annexation agreement, so that in place, it would be there.
So it's still a decent lift for a homeowner that wanted to do this? I mean, I'm su, I'm assuming we could aid in that process, but it's, it's not.
No, I mean, you're still looking at the tap fee, the meter fee, and then hiring a plumber to make the connection, so it's still.
Okay.
It's still less expensive than digging a new well.
Yeah.
So if we were to say yes, that we wanted even the residential to annex, when they say yes, they want to go on our water system, couldn't that just be something that's automatic? We wouldn't necessarily make them do any additional jumping through hoops?
I don't think I understand that.
So, okay, so during our last discussion, we were talking about whether or not we were gonna require annexation.
Yeah.
If somebody wants to come onto the water system. So if we all agreed and said, yes, they're going to have to annex, couldn't it just be like an automatic, where they're not necessarily having to take extra steps? Or, do you know what I mean, like, you're describing they have to do these petitions to the village, would that just be part of the, I guess, the application to get on the water system? I'm just, I'm thinking, does it become streamlined?
We could make it that way, but they, we would be required to do all, that whole process.
I mean, I think both processes would run simultaneously, we'd be running the annexation process and them hooking into our water system.
So just to make it easier for that particular, you know, the property owners, that's what I'm saying, instead of, if we're, if we're saying yes, or if they're saying yes, they want to come on to the water system, and we're saying, well, you're going to have to annex to do that, then I just think we should make the process very easy, or as easy as possible.
But there may be other issues that whoever wants to annex into the village, there may be other issues that they have to resolve in order to annex. So I understand you're streamlining, but I still think that it needs to stay two separate things, you know, yes, you want village water, and yes, you want to annex into the village, but I'm sure there's probably a whole, host of issues that could possibly come up when someone tries to annex that they've gotta fix, or get up to compliance, or whatever, in order to annex into the village.
Like I said, as staff, you know, we would recommend the process run simultaneously, it wouldn't be one process, and it's possible the tapping on our system might, that process might finish before the annexation process is finished, there would just be that agreement that they're going to annex.
It, it could be something where it's as simple as, everything is up, they have no other issues, they're annexing to get village water, and it's a simultaneous thing, but there may be other issues that they've gotta resolve prior to annexation.
But bottom line, as we're removing some of the hurdles, which is a big financial hurdle for that road and sidewalk, you know, and I think there's some other impact fees that we can charge, that might be in the memo there, but we can't remove all of those, because, you know, when they annex, they have, we, I'm sure there's state statute that governs the actual process, so there's a little bit of a hurdle, but we're doing what we can.
Does anybody know how many houses that would be eligible, that are on wells that have water main running past our house, that would be eligible to take advantage of this?
That have mains running in front of their home?
Yeah, yeah, houses now, they're on their own private wells, that have water mains running in front of their house, that would be in a position to take advantage of tapping on our water?
I don't know what that number is off the top of my head, but we can definitely calculate what that is.
Okay, I was just wondering if it was, you know, four, or five, or a hundred, or...
Well, I think it's probably somewhere in between, five and a hundred.
Yeah.
I would guess, but probably on the lower end, but we can do that research.
When somebody installs a new service line, and, and maybe, you know, maybe someone may have an idea on this, like, in Parkview, do we know how much it costs to install a water line? I know you have short and long services, but is there an average cost directional board get into the house, hook up the meter?
Again, those are hard estimates to quantify exactly, but I would say in the tune of anywhere from three to 7,000 would probably be a good rough estimate, depending, again, on conditions, whether it's short side, long side, side service, slab foundation as opposed to a crawl space or a basement, would obviously be things that would also attribute to those costs, so, again, that's, that's just a number off the top of my head, kind of off of, that I'm kind of using a little bit off of our lead service line project, so I would say it's, it's pretty accurate, but yeah, those, those would be good numbers to just use as a ballpark, I would say. If you wanted something a little bit more fine-tuned, I'm sure we could.
No, not as close enough, I just kind of tried to get an idea, if it was, you know, three, four, five, 10, 15,000. Yeah, I, I think it'd be, be kind of neat if, if there was some type of a grant program out there, like there was with the lead service lines, I think we did a really good service to those people out there, being able to get grant money and to, to take on that project and replace the lead service lines. I'm not sure if there is some type of grant money out there that perhaps we could assist with, and people that are on private wells, not make this something that's in perpetuity, but just make a program out of it, and assist people to, to get off of their private wells and onto, under our water. I get back to the, you know, the same issue, is they're shallow wells, they're susceptible to all types of contamination, and I would, I would like to see people to be able to, to get on our water at a minimal cost. As I thought about this in the last meeting, I said, I, you know, they, give them, you know, don't make them annex if they, if they want to tap to our water. As I thought about it, you know, perhaps maybe we go a little further than that, and say, you know, if you want our water and you don't want to annex, then, you know, you get to pay the annexation, or you get to pay the tap fee, you get to pay the meter fee, you're gonna have to pay the fee to have it installed into your house, you're gonna have to pay for the meter, but if they're willing to annex in, then perhaps we could waive those fees for them, the annexation fee, the tap fee, and provide the meter to give them an incentive to annex in, and just help them out with, with the cost of the water. But then again, if there's some grant money out there, too, that would be a condition of it all, so if we were to do a program to help people get off of private wells and under our water, then obviously they would need to annex into the village to do so.
I wasn't, I wasn't here for the whole, you know, the last discussion on this, but from what I remember seeing, aren't we granting them a huge savings by waiving that roads fee? So we're kind of, we're helping them.
Yes, that is a.
Right, with that?
A very large.
And then, I think there was a conversation about possible, there's some kind of a financing that we can help them with, to pay it over time, off the, during their water bill process?
I do think that discussion came up about the possibility with the, the tap fee and the meter fee, about.
Being able to spread that out over a little time.
Spreading that out if we, if they needed to, to help with them.
So maybe, does it make sense to separate two issues, just a little bit? One is, the policy that we have for somebody that came to us and requested to tap onto our main, it's adjacent to their house, here's, here's what the policy would be, the policy that we talked about last week is, we require that you annex into the village, we waive the fees that we talked about, you pay your water tap fee, the cost of the installation, and you, you know, you construct that yourself. Separate that from the discussion of, there are an unknown number of homes, probably on the east side of Montgomery Road, that are immediately adjacent to existing main, they're on wells, what would it take to, find out how many it is, and if there's any sort of funding to encourage, you know, those types of homes, or those homes to tap, to tap onto our system, to get them off wells? I don't know if any such grant exists, and what kind of a program we could do to encourage that, so they have safe drinking water. I think those, I'm not trying to separate them on purpose, but it just kind of feels like, that's a huge, that's not a huge unknown, it's literally, we don't know how many homes it is, we don't have a petition in front of us, but it seems to make sense, and I think it seems like there's a majority of board support for that, doing that first option, setting that policy, and then we can kind of look into what we would do for, for homes that wanted to tap on.
And so the tap-on fee is 1590, and the meter's about 280, and the annexation fee is 450, so that's $2,300 of fees that we're gonna charge. And if it's, if it's three to 7,000 for them to pay to have water, I mean, that's, that's half of what they're gonna pay to get the water into their home and hooked up.
Yeah.
So they're paying half again, just in fees, to get the water in their house, and, and I don't want to turn this into, you know, a way for us to, to make money off of people. I, I, to me, the goal here is to get people off of wells and onto reliable water source. At some point in time, you know, their wells may dry up, and then they're really gonna be in a situation, it's better for them to do it now, and if we can, can give them some help and sympathize them to, to do that now, and again, I'm not saying to do this forever, it's, you know, you gotta, you gotta window, you know, two years, if you do it within two years, we'll waive the fees for you, after that, it's, you know, you're on your own.
How many fees are we waiving with the roads thing? It was significant. I just could, I mean, when they built my house, I'm pretty sure I paid for the water and the roads.
That's, that's true, and I never did agree with that fee, and I know you weren't at the last meeting, but I, I know there was a situation where a couple, they were seniors and fixed income, and it was gonna cost them $15,000, just in fees to the village before they even started to hook up to our water. You know, our water main's been out there forever, it's been paid for long ago, to charge someone a fee to, you know, to put street and curb and gutter and sidewalk in front of their house, which may never happen if the whole street doesn't annex, I, I just don't think that's fair. So I get what you're saying, but I never thought it was fair in the first place, I don't think we're really waiving anything that those people are gonna realize in the near-term future.
Well, it could potentially keep them from having annexed over the last decade, and this would be kind of changing the game there, in waiving those fees, you know, I'd be supportive of doing the, the first part that I talked about, the waiving of certain fees, the road fees in particular, and then kind of revisit the other option of looking at waiving things entirely, because you never know, that could be the impetus for folks in that corridor to tap on, maybe that was the main reason why they didn't. I know specifically that we had one person came before the board, or, I guess it was the board, or planning commission requesting annexation, but didn't want to pay the road fees, and thus it died, so.
We could address the issue of trying to figure out a way to incentivize and help through grants and further investigation, but before us, deciding on, annex, don't annex, waive the roads fees.
Yeah, well, and the other thing is, unless there's some sort of change agent, i.e., like a grant from, from the state for working on a program like this, it doesn't seem like it would be, and that would be, I'm talking about the waiving of fees to encourage people to tap on our system, we don't necessarily have a vested interest in that, other than clean, you know, ensuring they have clean drinking water, absent any sort of change agent there, it seems like a heavy lift for staff, you know, it could be, I guess we just don't know what we're talking about, or how many homes we're talking about, so.
Pete Aurora, the blocks out there that are Aurora's, are they hooked up with Aurora water, or did they just, long time ago, annex, or? There's a lot of it that's township, but there's a lot more than five that need, you know, they're on wells, I'll tell you that right now.
So Aurora's general policy has been that they will provide water to a, you know, an unincorporated property if they agree to annex to the, to the city, so they would do a pre-annexation agreement, and then, I'm not certain, to be honest with you, how they handle all their fees in Aurora, whether they charge them the normal tap-on fees, that's something we can find out, I just don't know, but I do know that they do require, you know, an agreement to annex when they're contiguous to the city of Aurora.
I remember fifteen, seventeen years ago, when I first got on, eighteen years ago, you're, is, is like, Dan was talking about, nobody, everybody wanted to annex either to Aurora, or, but nobody wanted them, because everybody said, well, we don't want the roads, and then we gotta put the gutters and all that in, and then they said, well, you can annex, and then you can pay for this, the curbs and the streets, when the rest of the people annex, and the guy goes, that might be never, I'm never gonna do that, I mean, I'm not gonna pay for it for 25 years from now, and, but at the same time, the roads were a factor, because a lot of those roads were not, are not very good shape right now, but there's a lot of. But there's a lot of fifth, in fact, Pete's gone, but Pete had a friend there that on Fifth Avenue and maybe Montgomery Road, that lady would love to come to Montgomery, but her problem was, is the fees. Cause she wanted the water and all that, but she, she just didn't want to pay for the roads and everything. And yet when we put in the Habitat, we told them, hey, you gotta put sidewalks in, you gotta put. Ah, we don't, we don't usually do that. Well, when they did do it, they said that from now on, we're gonna do it all over. Because it's a, it's a community now. People walk around the houses. It's a, it was a great idea. But again, we took the whole strip in, so they had to do it type of situation. But Watson Street, I know those people, my cousin used to live on that street and that's all, all wells. And, uh, that's the last street and that's a, um, township. So you, you got a lot of township back and forth every other block, but I don't know how. The annexation shouldn't really include the street and the sidewalks and all that unless we're gonna do them right now. If we're not gonna do them now, it's silly to make these people like Dan say, pay fifteen grand. And that's what scared a lot of them away before. I think a lot of them would say, hey, three of them on my block are Montgomery now and three are township. Well, I think Watson's that way. I think one side of the street is Montgomery or, or Hinckley the next street is. And then their street isn't. And they said, we'd be glad to come, but we're not paying for those roads and curbs. But we'd love to have your water, cause they get enough water now flooded.
So require annexation, drop the road fee, and if a hardship exists for the tap on, we, we'll see that as that comes. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
I second that motion.
Yeah, my point of, of view from this and, and I commend the village. They're very proactive in the, um, let service lines in Parkview. When it was determined that that was a health issue and, and we were way above, way out front on that. And, um, I, I just look at this as the same type of situation. We know that, that private wells can, um, can have issues, um, both from, uh, you know, a health point of view and also from, uh, from drying up. And I look at it more of a, of a way to, to, um, to help people get under our water for, for health and safety reasons, rather than just to make them, you know, annex in the village. And, you know, I, um, and I kind of look at it as if we went to, out in Marbury and said, uh, yeah, we're gonna do this, but you, since you're putting a new tap in, we're gonna charge this tap on fee. You know, we waived all the fees out there because we wanted to, to make sure that people got in the program and we put a lot of incentives in that. And I just, I, I have the same feeling on this, on this here is that we should do everything we can to try to get people to, to get off of their wells and get under our water. And any cost savings that we can give them is, is just, uh, you know, gonna help. Again, twenty-three hundred, twenty-three hundred dollars just in fees. Is, uh, it's quite a bit.
And I think the first, the first house on, um, or the first business annexed because of the water. It's got the little, right now, it used to be a different type of business, but right now it's got a car dealership. And then you have a lot of those that used to be Miller Pack, which used to sell meat retail. They used to have a lot of retail places in there. But that guy right in there would not annex because again of the road issue and that type of stuff. But there would be your sales tax and everything if you could get them to come in. And yet the other guy right next to him is in Montgomery.
Yeah. Yeah, and this would only be for residential, correct?
Yes.
Cause commercial's kind of a different ballgame.
Right.
But it seems to make sense that we separate the two issues. If somebody comes to us, our policy is as stated. And if, and explore how many situations we have, if there's an I E P A funding source and what that impetus might be. And staff can report back.
All right. So for, for those that approach us, we will go with what's been discussed tonight and then we'll look at, uh, possibly a proactive plan for encouraging people.
And were you looking for an actual policy that we approve?
I mean, we'll develop one. I don't know that.
Okay.
But we'll, based on what you did.
If you don't need to approve it, just include it in the, in the notes.
Yep.
So we, so we get that and then report back on the I E P A stuff.
Okay.
All right. Okay, thank you. Um, and I need to apologize, gentlemen, to my inconsistency here. I let, I start, I did Ed's first so he could head out of here. I know you guys were hanging out tonight, so.
Which one you going to now?
I'm gonna go to the classification and comp, comp study. So I knew that was gonna be a little bit more of a complicated discussion. But I'm just bouncing around here just to keep everybody awake. So with that, um, you wanna go?
Sure, that's fine. Um, you know, Joellen presented last month, or last meeting. And I asked you guys just take that in, then take the report, uh, do it, then we would continue to talk about it at future meetings. Uh, this will be our first of what I'm sure will be a few discussions. Um, a couple of things to start it off, uh, although they're not here, I do want to thank Gov HR, um, for the, the work they've done on this. I hope you appreciated the, the presentation, Joellen coming, um, last time. Uh, really liked, they had a nice structured process that got us from, uh, when you guys approved the contract and to the, to the presentation that you saw at the last meeting. I felt like they had very, I'd say, yes, well-established and I don't know if defensible is the right word, explainable methods for both how they did the internal rankings of positions and how they determined our like communities. So that, you know, if I'm trying to explain to staff or, or others, you know, how they came up with that, uh, felt like they had a good process for that. Did want to point out at the meeting last, at the last meeting, um, you know, in the report, she showed you proposed ranges in the fiftieth and the sixtieth percentile. Um, in the original report that came to staff, they also did a sixty-fifth, seventy-fifth and an eightieth percentiles. Just from discussions I've had with the board and your philosophy on where you want to be in the market, I did have them remove those. But if you want that information, don't want to overstep. So if you want that, I will get you that information. But I did, like I said, just based on past discussions, have them pull that out. Couple of questions that I assume will come up in the discussion that I figured I could address. Figure one will be, can we afford to implement the recommendation? The short answer, I would say is yes. In the proposed budget that you'll, we'll start discussing here, we have included implementation of the recommendation at the sixtieth percentile. Uh, the reason we chose that is that has the largest cost impact. So that way we knew whatever the board decides to implement, that we could afford it. That was the most conservative approach, was to include the sixtieth. Cause then we know we could cover whatever you want to do. Second question I figured, uh, would ask would be regarding implementation and how it affect, uh, current employees. So of the, you know, approximately sixty employees we have, um, there would be sixteen employees that would fall below the minimum range for their position. Of those, eleven would be in public works. As we discussed at the last meeting, they are the ones that are seeing, you know, were hit hardest by this. That kind of makes sense. In the last contract, we didn't move the minimum ranges. So their minimums have been set, you know, at that level for quite a while. So that does make sense. Uh, the other five positions, two are in P D, um, and there are three in Village Hall. Uh, the two in P D are small increases and the three in Village Hall are whatever is smaller than small. They're all less than a percent from their range and two of them are less than a quarter percent. So they're all, I mean, you're talking a hundred and twenty dollars for, for a couple of them. So, um, with that, like I said, I'm happy to try and.
Less than a hundred and twenty dollars annually?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the variance of the eleven, uh, public works employees who are under range?
I'd say the average percentage is probably between eighteen and nineteen percent.
Jesus.
Below? And that's, that's in this table, right?
Yeah, and I've got, I can.
And that's below minimum range, correct?
That's what they are, to get them to the minimum. Uh, oh, right here. So if you look, look up here, got the eleven public works employees. You can see the current minimum and what, what their current pay rate is, what the proposed new minimum is. And so then what we would propose moving them to, and then you can see last columns, the percentage increase. And then you can see P D, the two employees are roughly five and a half percent. And then as I said, the Village Hall employees really don't even count in my book as, as they're.
Well, these percentage increases equate to how much, what's the dollar amount? Five thousand it looks like? Like.
Public works.
The public works ones?
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking, three, that'd be a little more than that, cause what's three dollars and seventy cents?
No, that's about right, yeah.
Two thousand, so about that. Six grand.
Okay. And that's, yeah, that's what's in these tables too.
Yep.
Basically, so like maintenance worker one position, we're currently minimum at forty-one, uh, thousand nine hundred. And the sixth, would you say sixtieth or sixtieth?
Yes, the sixtieth.
Sixtieth percentile is forty-eight thousand, so you're coming up, um, like seven grand.
Yep. That's the twenty fifteen versus the twenty-three eighty-five here.
Okay. I think this may highlight why over the last several years, we've, um, in hiring new employees, you know, especially at Public Works, you know, employees come, employees leave.
Yep.
That might be one of the key reasons for that.
Yeah, cause obviously if you're looking at what we're current, our current minimum is versus what we're seeing the market is, that we are, are below. So, um, with that, my goal tonight was if there's further explanations you want from things Joellen shared, or if you had questions, I'll try and answer what I can. Things that I can answer, I'll bring the answers back to a future meeting. It's like I said, I, we will continue discussing. Our goal is to be able to implement something as of May one. So we've got tonight's meeting, two meetings in March and two meetings in April. So I'm hoping between that, we can answer your questions and you can let us know what direction you'd like to go.
Yep. I have a comment and a question. Whoever's idea it was to do this study is a genius.
I thought that was, it was you, yeah.
I would recommend, being that we've got eleven staff, that to me, that, that's pretty significantly under range to the minimum of range. I'd be curious to see if there's anything we can do prior to the next budget cycle to get them at least closer to that minimum range.
And that's certainly something.
I mean, as in.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
If that's board's direction, that's certainly something we can.
Quite frankly, I, I think we, we've got the data in front of us that's showing us we're, we're getting a steal from some folks who work pretty hard to at least get them to that minimum range. It's, it's, it's appropriate. It's, it's something we should do.
Did you want to give them your address since there's a storm coming? You know, I'm not saying that he's past.
He can already have that, like, come on. I didn't just, you know, I, quite frankly, it, it's all of them, all sixteen that are out of range. Get them to the minimum range. And I, I think some of the discussion I'd be interested in is where within these ranges would we expect or want our staff to be? I, I would think we would hope to try to get people towards that, that, that mid-tier, that, that fifty percent, that sixty percent of their range. For someone with some experience, with, with some commitment to the village, with some years of work and service, um, ideally. But, but being under range and being significantly under range, um, I, I'm not okay with. I, I think we can do better. I think we, we, I would be interested if you and Justin can take a look at the numbers and see if there's something we could do sooner. If the rest of the board would be okay with that.
If, if, if that's the board's direction, we'll, we can look into that. As you'll hear Justin probably talk about, you know, we are expecting a surplus in this year's budget, so don't want to speak for him. But I think that's certainly something we could, could look at if that's the, the direction of the board.
Well, and, and so what kind of one of the other thoughts that I had, and they contemplate this in the study is, and I, I fully support that honestly, um, is now we've raised the, we've raised the minimum, we've raised, uh, what was it? Sixteen, thirteen, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen employees to the minimum salary. So we've, we've looked at all of our comps in the whole area and now we've raised you to the minimum. Congratulations. Next year, May first, um, you know, there wouldn't be any pay increases. They would still, at this point next year, still be, oh no, November, they could be potentially bumped up. And kind of where I'm going with this is, you know, it's not my desire, especially, um, I understand when you first started out at a position, you know, potentially being at the minimum. But, uh, funding a pool, you know, ensuring that our, our raises are, um, in the next fiscal year are such that folks won't continue to be at the minimum next year, so they can kind of bump up in the system.
Yes, and that's the goal. So if we set the ranges as of May one or when, you know, then people would have their increases in November, so they would get above the range. And we, you know, put in our last discussion that the ranges would, would move. We set, you know, a standard for them to move. But the goal would be that, you know, that movement is less than, than how they're moving through the range.
What's the, uh, pool that we have for raises in the new budget?
The proposed budget, it's a three and a half percent would be the, the maximum, somebody.
How did we get below the average minimum?
So.
I mean, it, it seems like we do pay studies. This is probably the third since I've been on the board.
If I could make a comment too, just for the board's information, so the eleven members of Public Works that are shown below the minimum range, keep in mind that Public Works was formerly represented by a, uh, a, a union, um, negotiation contract. That union has since abolished and not, uh, I'm sorry, not abolished, but has chosen not to represent, uh, Public Works staff any longer. So previous negotiations were done by the representing union and not by, by current staff. So that's, that's a huge part of why you're seeing a percentage difference. Cause at the time that last negotiate was, was taking place, uh, that was not part of the request of negotiations at that time was to increase the minimum ranges for those positions. So I did want to, I did want to point that out to staff or to the board, I'm sorry.
So are you saying that the union wasn't negotiating well for their employees?
I, I, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that you could make your own interpretation.
I remember when they went union, I said, if you guys just not go union, we'd do a better job than the union for you salary wise. And they wouldn't listen and it turned that way, but, uh, you're, um, well, the uni, uh, it's not all just the union. We had like seven, eight guys, six or eight, six out of the eight or even eight out of the eight were all maintenance two. And if you look at maintenance two, it's a big jump. And right now we have zero maintenance two guys, if I'm not mistaken, correct? And that's, that's our problem over the years, why these people weren't given a chance to become maintenance two. And they were eliminated. And when they got turned over to one, they stayed at one for years and it was just like, too bad. But that's, that was the way they could have a step up and make another three, four, five thousand and they can't do that. They just.
So we, we currently have one maintenance two worker in the street division of Public Works. We do also still have the job description of a maintenance worker two in, uh, the profile for Public Works. So we just have had a large range of new hires over the course of the last year, year and a half. So we have several people who are performing at a high rate, um, and are doing extremely well. They just haven't quite met the criteria that we're at for, to, to getting them to a maintenance two. But we do have several candidates who are definitely getting closer to that. And that, that ability is still there within our current structure.
Four or five years ago, they didn't get that opportunity though.
Yep, but I, I, I think that the opportunity we have now is looking forward, using this as a tool in, in that development, in that compensation plan that, that the department heads and the directors and Jeff can put together for the staff. But the, the, the numbers are numbers. Numbers don't lie. And I think we, we have a responsibility to appropriately compensate the staff that works for the village. Still doing back best practices, um, still being respective of the taxpayer dollars that are being spent.
I do have a, kind of a particular question. So I can see that they're, the first nine all have the current, um, oh no, they're close to the current rate. Can you comment on any like inequity that we would have if, if let's say we bumped them to the minimums that are in here? Let's say there's an employee that worked and has an extra couple of years experience now, is at the same hourly rate.
It's depending what you'll see the, uh, bottom two, so employees seven and eight there and nine are all currently at a higher pay rate. And so we do show bumping them slightly above the minimum to try and keep that.
So you knock down the compression issue, right?
Yeah.
Cause, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, we, we may discover others as we go through, but those are, we're just looking at the people that we knew would be below the minimum. And so yes, we are trying to address that and not take people and put them all at the minimum and lose that, that separation that was there.
Here's just a quick question. We knew these guys were five, eight thousand, needed to be up. What about the people in the survey? And I think I had a couple of them. I didn't do a real close look, that are above our pay grade.
It's prescribed. Gov HR says you don't continue to increase them. You hold them if their, if their work throughout the year is exemplary, you can do a stipend, you can do a one-time payment. But eventually over two years or three years or four years, their range is gonna catch up to where they're at now. You don't take away money from somebody.
I realize you couldn't, but.
But you just, you, you hold them and it's. But you just, you, you hold them, and at the end of the year, potentially, it's a bonus of a five hundred bucks or a thousand bucks, something, um, to reward that work. And then as the range adjusts annually through CPI, whatever the prescribed methodology is, eventually, they're gonna fall back into that range, within, within a short, short time.
I'll double check, but I don't believe we have anybody that's going to be above the ranges, no. I think we just had the, the, those people, I only believe anybody that'll be over.
Somebody might be a, a, above the mid-range, but probably not of the top end. I didn't, I didn't catch anybody over the top end of the.
No, I do think we'll have some that'll be over the, the mid-range, yes.
Yeah, there's some that are over that fifty, sixty percentile, but I didn't see anybody outside.
Don't believe we have anybody that'll be outside the, the maximum of the range.
So this represents about ninety thousand dollars. This, right here on the screen, is about ninety thousand total.
For a full year.
For a year.
On a total.
If, if we moved everybody.
Sure, what's our total, um?
Total general fund budgets.
Not general fund budget, but for staff, what's the total?
Staff and benefits is approximately eight million dollars.
Well, yes.
I do not have.
Yeah, you don't have, just salary.
The exact number for salaries right now.
So while I appreciate the eight million, I also appreciate the ninety thousand, just putting it in context, that's all, but it's, it's good to know.
Yeah.
And that's why my recommendation wasn't, you know, maybe we can't just go ninety tomorrow out of the bag, but if you can go halfway, if you can do something even prior to the next fiscal.
Well, but Tom, I mean, between now and the end of the fiscal, you're not looking at the ninety because you're only, you've only got a couple of months to go.
Right, it's, you know, a couple of pay periods, right.
So it's a portion of that.
I'm kinda with you, Tom. I think that it's been brought to our attention, and we need to fix it as quickly as we can, cause it's not ninety thousand. It's gonna be, you know, several pay cycles, it's not, it's not gonna be a year's worth, it's not gonna be ninety thousand dollars, that's the annual. You know, it's, I think, you know, to show a good faith that we should step up and fix it immediately, as soon as we're aware of the problem, we should fix it.
So as I look at this, a few things come to mind. The, um, they made a recommendation in here, they talked about defined increment plans and open merit plans. And the village was a defined increment plan, especially for, um, the, um, overtime employees, of the non-exempts. And that worked pretty well, and it kept people up pretty good with, uh, pay ranges. We went to a, uh, open range merit plan in the village some years ago, and part of the problem was is, it, it, it used to be, your start date was your annual increase date, so if you started on October nineteenth, that's when you got your review, that's when you, you would receive your increase. And then there was also some adjustment made on May first for, uh, for cost of living. When we went to open range merit plan, um, everybody moved to November one, um, evaluation date, uh, with a caveat that if you started after May first, that you did not receive an increase on November first. So if you started on May first or May second, you could go a year and a half without an increase. I would like to see us move back to a defined increment plan, um, with, especially if somebody is brought in at the, uh, minimum, that at their six-month, uh, review, um, once they get off of probation, they receive a step increase at that time, and then, uh, another six months, get another step increase on their anniversary date, and they get a step increase every anniversary date. That would move people through the scale a little bit quicker, uh, get them up, um, a little bit more, uh, in line with, um, with other municipalities. The, uh, I've, I've had some people say to me, well, you know, if you got a defined plan, you're kinda locked in, but that's not true, because in the past, the village has for people who have gone above and beyond, either after anniversary, giving them a double step, or when they reach that milestone, uh, give them a step then. Uh, if they get promoted, then, um, their new, um, review date would be the date of their promotion. I just, when, when you look at it with the, the open range merit plan, it, it could take you fifteen or twenty years. If you started at the bottom of the range, to ever get to the, the, close to the top of the range, if you keep moving ranges, you could be at the bottom of the range.
So the defined step plan, though, you, you just get the increase automatically?
No, no, you would still get a, um, you would still get a review, and you still had to, uh, to score. It, it was possible that, uh, if you didn't score well, that you would not get a step, and then you could be placed back on probation, because you weren't performing well. Of course, that happens, too, at the six-month review. Uh, you know, when you, when you get your six-month, um, probation period, uh, I believe now the village has, uh, where, you know, they can extend it another three months, uh, if they feel that you need to, um, you know, need another three months to, to perform. But no, it's not, it's, it's not automatic, you can, if you're a poor performer, not receive a step increase. But I never saw that happen, everybody was, was always well within performance, cause, you know, honestly, if you have a poor performer, you're not gonna wait, you know, until their, until the review, you're gonna try to make adjustments and, uh, and try to, uh, to help them, uh, you know, bring their performance up. And if they can't perform, you know, to standards, then unfortunately, sometimes you just have to part ways and find someone who can. But, um, I, I think that's when things really started getting skewed, is when we went away from the defined increment plan and, uh, to the open range merit plan.
And I, I'm not a fan of the defined merit plan, I'm, I'm not at all, I'm a merit-based person, because of, somebody who just shows up every day and does the bare minimum is gonna get an increase. And the guy who's doing a lot is gonna get the same increase.
Right.
And that's, and that's not okay, there's no incentive for Steve to work harder.
So I, and I'm just going off of the, I'm just going off of, um, of the analysis here, and when they, uh, when they talk about the differences between the plan, defined increment plan, and the open merit plan, and they even in the report put that a defined increment plan is better suited for uh, non-exempt employees, and an open range merit plan is better suited for exempt employees. I, and, and again, I mean, if you have somebody that's not performing, if they're just showing up and, and just doing the bare minimum, I, I think that's an issue. They don't get a, they don't get an increase, that's, that's not what you're here for, you're here to work, you're here to do a good job. And if you're not doing that, then, you know, is, you know, we need to do something. Not us as a board, but staff needs to do something to bring that individual up to perform, and if they can't, like I said, sometimes, you know, you just have to part ways if they're not a performer.
And you're talking village-wide, not, not just at Public Works.
That's correct, that's correct.
Village-wide, non-represented.
Right, and, you know, and as I was reading this, because it's kinda funny, cause in the report, they were, like I said, they were saying that exempt, or non-exempt employees, not, you know, overtime employees operate better on a defined increment plan, it's more, it's a better plan to suit to, uh, to an overtime employee that really doesn't have, um, let's try to find it here and see what the wording was. But I, I, I don't see it right off, but, um, they were talking about, that was more suited plan, where you have somebody that's, that is exempt from overtime, they're, uh, you know, they're, they can, they can better perform their job in a way that they can get the, the higher merit. And I'm paraphrasing what the report says, like I said, I just find it, go back and read it, report. But, um, you know, it's, and, and again, an open range merit plan, uh, at the, at the lower levels can, you know, quite honestly, turn into a popularity contest, you know? It's, it's really up to the discretion of the person that's giving the, the review on if you, uh.
Which is, I mean.
It is on the other side.
Devil's advocate, it is, I mean, it's entirely similar to, to situation outside of government, you know, I work for a, a public corporation now, I worked for a private company before that. And the reason why I, uh, and the board historically has been advocating away from, um, the standard increases is to say to our employees that this is the, these are the raises that we can afford this year, this is what we've budgeted for. And we do that on an annual basis, based on, you know, situations, times are, are good right now, as we'll see, hopefully, after this, when we talk about the budget. But in the downturn, if, you know, let's say things, um, uh, turn, and we can't afford the table that we've already approved, then now we're taking funds and raises away from people that they have been planning for in the future. And, you know, again, outside of government, that, that's not, um, that's not normal to have, or standard, to have your raises built in. If you're a solid performer, if you work hard for the village, um, then you're going to be rewarded for such, and if you, if you don't, you know, if you're, if you're just an average performer, then you're gonna get average raises. And, you know, I, I don't wanna speak for any of our department heads, but I feel like, I hope that we've seen the positive results that we want from a situation like that.
I believe so.
That's why, I'm sorry, that's why I asked at the, the last meeting, if, if they had actually, out of all the municipalities they surveyed, if they asked, actually had asked that question, what type of a plan are you on? Because I, I know just by looking at some of these comparables, that there, there are some, I know for a fact, are on defined plans. And I do have one other thing I, I'd like to bring up, and I think that's, that's just for everybody else's reference. I, I think they did a really good job on this, I, I went through and I looked at a lot of different municipalities and, and the, uh, the positions and stuff. And there's, there's one, there's one area that I, I think that is a little deficient on this. And that would be, um, while it, it worked out well for the water plant operator position, as I look at the water sewer superintendent position and historically in the village, um, there was a, uh, streets and a water and sewer, and the, the water and sewer was always a higher rate of pay, just because of the level of certifications required. And in that vein, when I look at these comparables, and I just went through and jumped on the, uh, the EPA website, out of all of these, the first one on the list, they don't even provide their own waters, provided by a private contractor. Uh, two of these people, two of these municipalities, they don't even have a responsible operator in charge that's contracted out. So the, the majority of them are, uh, a lot of them are C-class plants, which is, um, typically, they take it from, uh, DuPage or Lake Water, they just pump it and add a little bit of chlorine, so they have no, they have no water plants. Then there's class B plants that are comparable to, uh, our ion exchange plants that we have in town. And then there's only two, um, class A plants, and one of those has a contracted responsible operator in charge. So that only leaves one plant, and that's West Chicago, that actually has the exact same water plant we have, and it's a class A plant, and that's the only plant they have. So when I look at it on that basis, I think that in our municipality, our water and sewer superintendent has a lot more responsibility than in any of these, because he's operating one class A plant and two class B plants. And while they did also take in consideration the size of the town, you have to realize that, why we have nineteen thousand people in our municipality, we also have eight thousand in Boulder Hill, so now they're servicing twenty-seven thousand residents. So I, I think that maybe we need to take another look at this, the, the range on this one.
Solid point.
Yeah, they'll say the, the range for that position was not the sole determination of their proposed range, because they look at all the positions that fall within that band, so the street superintendent, the chief building official, the sergeant, the water superintendent, all in that same band.
Correct.
Because they all graded out the same internally for us, they were equal positions. Um, and so they look at all those salary ranges and try and meld those together, so that that range wasn't just taken, and that applied to the, to the water superintendent, those four ranges were all looked at, and they tried to make those four work, those four ranges all work for those four positions, since they were graded the same.
Right, yeah, and that's kinda, I figure, that's why I was thinking was going on with that, and that's, that's kinda why I don't like those bands in particular, where you try to lump a bunch of different people on one.
We're trying to, trying to look at internal equity, so positions that are valued the same to the village, as far as the work they're asked to do here, you know, the grades they were given, so.
Right.
Looking at internal equity, um, a couple of other things, we have lately started to look when people pass their six-month probation, at giving them a, a bump, depending on the timing, so they're not going that, you know, like you said, year and a half, or whatever it is. Um, so it is something we're looking at, um, with the different discuss, discussion, the different plans, um, you know, they discussed three plans in there, their recommendation for all employees, exempt and non-exempt, was to go with an open range. When they discussed the defined increment, what they were saying is between exempt and non-exempt employees, a defined range is usually better for a, you know, between those two groups, it's usually better for a, um, non-exempt employee. But their recommendation was that we take the exempt and non-exempt and put them in an open range, um, for the reasons that, that you guys all stated about, you know, motivation and flex, flexibility for the village, so.
What we're gonna do then is take the fifty percentile, the minimum and the maximum, and that's gonna be our range, is that correct?
No.
No?
Sixtieth, probably.
Sixtieth. Okay.
That's what's budgeted, and that is slightly.
That's just budget, alright.
Yeah, and slightly above average.
The only thing I did not like, I brought this up at my meeting, is the actual salaries. This person did not get the actual salaries. And I don't care what anybody says, if you take New Lennox, and they are the highest all the way down, and you get rid of them, it changes. And everybody said, no, no, if you get rid of one, average is still, won't make a difference. Well, it does if you only have six in the actual salary range. And you get rid of the highest, and the other five are all real close together. But by having that sixth in there and being overweighted, it increases your average salary, phew, way up there. She could've got Yorkville, North Aurora, very easy, all you gotta do is go on, they, in their websites, they have individuals and what they're making. She could've done that.
Yorkville and North Aurora reported for some categories, and I pulled up after you discussed in the meeting, so I pulled them up, and I have like, I have all of them up here for each category, so for village administrator.
Village administrator, they got, she got almost all of them, why don't you hit the rest of them? Street superintendent, hit all of those, majority of them are not in there, darn it, you can look in your book. And New Lennox is hot, there are ten thousand more people in that town than people make ten thousand dollars more money. Take that one out, I don't care what she said about, well, you can lose one and your average is still close to an average, it is if you got everybody in there, but you don't.
Well, I went and looked at each position that they surveyed, and the people that applied, I looked to see, ranked them from highest to lowest, so you can see up here. So for village administrator, New Lennox was second, community relations, they were seventh, and they were third, first, fourth, ninth. So they did vary, um, you know, for deputy chief, they were thirteenth on the list. Uh, same for public works director, New Lennox fell at thirteenth, so it did vary.
It did, but when you got to the smaller titles, they didn't have them. In other words, uh, yeah, I agree, the manager, we would hope you'd have all of them, the police chief, I hope we have all of them, the deputy chief. But when you got some of the lower ones, it was none, 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 for Yorkville, for all those.
You're talking about that they're, they may have responded with the range, but they didn't give the actual salary they're paying.
No, you're saying some of.
We wanted the, those that had only actual salary, we didn't use, cause we wanted the range. Of the thirty categories that they surveyed, New Lennox was the highest in three of them. So there were only three positions that they were, that they were the highest. I looked at them, I looked at the minimums for all, everybody that reported, just so I'd have something to compare.
All I'm saying is, there's no sense of using the average, I like the, the minimum and the maximum there. But that throws it out when you look at our, our salary compared to the rest of them, it looks like we're.
I mean, I guess that's why we have to trust them in the process, cause I would look at, at Peru being an outlier the other way, their population's about nine thousand below us. They responded in eight categories, they were last in seven of them, and next to last in the other one.
But Ottawa.
But it's part of the process, I mean.
Ottawa and North Aurora and Yorkville are all the same size as we are, and then get those.
Yeah, and.
I mean, they got, they got eighteen of the twenty-three to, to reply, I mean, so they got a good sample size, I feel like.
Yeah, so that, that brings up another question, Jeff, what you're just talking about, so, um, cause I, I, I looked at a lot of numbers specifically on the water and sewer superintendent, cause that's the one that bothers me the most. If, if you look on the actual detailed salary data page, and they've got the average in the fiftieth and sixtieth percentile, so you're saying that, that they discounted the actual salary, they were looking at the minimum and out, maximum salary ranges.
What was it again, Dan?
If they only, for those that only provided a.
He's lost.
What, what page are you?
It's, uh, sixty-one, I'm sorry, thank you. I'll also refer to page twenty-four.
Yeah, if they only provided a salary for the existing employee, they didn't use that.
Okay.
And what they were looking for is a range, if they provided the range and the actual of the person that was in it, then they used the range, but if they only provided the actual.
Okay.
Cause there were twenty-two that responded with salaries, only eighteen of the communities. Because there were 22 that responded with salaries, only 18 of the communities supplied ranges. The other four supplied actuals, and so they didn't actually use, use those.
So if you look on page 61 then, it's the 60th percentile for water and sewer. It says 84.4 to 1.15, but then if you look on page 24, and you put them in the grade eight, it's only 80 to 1.12.
Yeah, and that's again blending with the, that happened to other positions too. HR manager lost about $4,000 or $5,000 from where their range says it should be because it was grouped with the senior planner, which was a lower range. And so they, trying to find the equity between those positions that are in the same band, plus the equity with the positions in the higher and lower bands to keep that separation between grade six versus grade seven. So yes, not, they didn't come out exactly to the average for that position. And some people gained from that, some, you know, some may have not have gained from, from where the range ended up.
And unless you're below the new minimum, you didn't gain or lose anything.
You're gonna be in that range.
Salary, and you're in the range.
And I think this kind of tells us why, you know, we had an issue the last go-around with getting a water and sewer superintendent. Why it took us so long is because our range, our proposed salary range, we just weren't getting, we weren't getting the applicants in because, you know, we were 73 to 102. And, you know, I look at some of these, even the actual salaries and even the ranges, and I kind of went into on the website and looked. So for instance, in West Chicago, the responsible operator in charge is making $119,548. And that's the exact same plant we have, and plus they don't have two additional ion exchange plants. So I'm just saying we need to keep that in mind if we want to attract qualified candidates and retain qualified candidates. Bumping or lumping people into grade levels just because that's just kind of where they fit. I don't know if that's.
So what I'm hearing you say though is, your suggestion is that we, that position, because of what's involved, should not be in the band. It should be in its own band.
Well, yeah.
Because of what's involved. I think that, I mean, I'm paraphrasing, but that's what I'm hearing, is because of what's involved, that one maybe shouldn't be banded with the rest of the.
Well, I'd say GovHR went through and had each employee fill out a questionnaire about their job, where they rated on nine different categories, then they interviewed the employees, and that's how they determined the value of the, of the positions. And those positions fell within, within that range together. So we're trying to protect internal equity there that.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I see Dan's point about needing to carry a Type A water license and you're running two different water plants. Nobody else is doing that.
It would be a question to go back to GovHR, because quite frankly, data is data. The internal equity is a really key component to this whole process and tool to use to administer salary compensation for the staff. So if we feel there's a position that's, that's just completely out of line, it's on Jeff to go back to Joelle and say, "Hey, we've got a couple of questions. Can we either get some further clarification or a re-interview of that particular position or a re-grading of that, of that particular job?" And she very well come back and say, "Yeah, you might want to bump this up to the next, the next level." Or, "No, really, this is, this, based on all the data, this is really where that falls."
As staff, we'd be happy to increase the maximum of the range. If that's what I'm hearing, we can do that.
So we, it sounds like we need to ask her that question. You know, short of, what I don't want to do is nitpick and pull certain things, the things we like out of the study and leave the things in that, you know, that tell the story we want it to tell, is, I don't really want to propose that we pull out certain people and leave in other people. What I would like to see is the, the data that was used graphed, so you can see the bands, to see if there truly is anybody that's an outlier on a graph, and that's not hard for them to do. And we can continue the conversation at a future meeting. Is there anything else that I missed? You had that question, you had that one.
I got one more question.
I bet you did.
What'd you say on New Lennox? How many, you said they were the top, only on three?
Three.
No, I got six right here. So you can't, I don't know where you guys are looking at. There's six of them right here. I'll tell you right here, from the, from the, like I said, the one police commander, the deputy chief, the financial assistant, water bill, and financial account, they're the highest, hello, everybody.
Why don't you guys figure that one out?
But I agree with, okay, I agree with the percentile, but you can't look at the average of the salary. It does not compute when you take one high one that's higher than anybody and everybody else.
Yeah, I'm guessing you're looking at the maximum. I just looked, I looked at the minimums when I was comparing them.
I was looking at the actual salary, I said. That's what I'm telling you.
Well, yeah, but the actual salary depends on how long the person's been there. We were looking at the ranges, because how long that person may have been there.
You can't have an average of what the average of that position is when you don't have any of the figures. That's what I'm saying.
Well said. Well, how about you guys, how about you guys can figure out the exact highs and lows there? But the, the reality is, and this is data, and we can slice this a thousand different ways. It's, it's a lot more data than we've had in any one of these, and I think for a little bit of history, we've, we've had, is this our third go-around of a salary survey?
Yes.
Over the last seven years since we've, since we've been working, and we've never approved anything. And so we have a little bit of momentum here. We hired an outside consultant to kind of look broadly. Was disconnected from the village and gave what I think is a wonderful report that we can, I think we can discuss the merits of certain things, like can we afford? When should we implement? Are there certain things that we don't like? Is the water plant operator an outlier that we need to address? But if we're going to argue, you know, semantics in here, then I don't think we're really helping ourselves in the long term. So how's about we do this? Tom made an excellent suggestion about the increases here, about trying to, actually, I know that we can do that. So finding a way, just earmark today, and we'll do anything, any changes that we make, we're gonna retro to today. Because I know that we can, I know that we have the surplus in this year's budget. I'm not gonna make a decision tonight because this is our first conversation. Let's table this. We'll get some answers from her, and we'll discuss this at the next board meeting that all of us can be at. Does that make sense? Does anybody else have any questions they didn't get to?
Are we doing anything? Oh, we're retroing to today?
Yeah, today.
For this?
Okay. Because we're not gonna jump the gun on it.
Once you decide what you want to do, it'll be retro to today.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions or concerns on the issue? I think, while a spirited debate, I think we're working in the right direction.
Healthy and spirited debate.
I know. Alright, anything else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And now, and now we're getting to the budget.
Well, actually, my doctor says after sitting for an hour and a half, we should take, you should stand for a second. Use the washroom, we'll reconvene in five minutes, okay?
No.
Thank you.
Get this thing done. Come on.
Unless anybody has anything else, we can do item A.
Thank you, President Brody.
Go ahead.
So, tonight, we're looking at the fiscal year 21 general fund budget and financial report. Trying to do two computers at one time here. I'm gonna speak a little bit about fiscal year 2020 that we're in right now. And then we'll go on to fiscal year 21 being next year. We have a projected actual revenues of $11.6 million versus a budget of $11.1 million. Some of the items that contributed to that were building permits, sales tax, income tax, and interest income being higher than what was budgeted. Expenditures, the budget was $10.1 million, and we came in at approximately $10.8 million. That leaves a surplus of roughly $800,000. Some of the items that we discussed earlier, that the board discussed earlier tonight, such as the LED streetlights and the mowers, those items, we are planning on purchasing those early so that we can use some of that surplus from this year. In regards to salaries, it could be used for that as well. I heard that mentioned a couple of times, so. After we look at all of those items that are purchased early, it comes down to roughly $570,000 surplus for fiscal year 20. Anybody have any questions about that?
What's the yellow pie? Is that invested?
It's lemon.
Income tax?
That is income tax, yes. Alright. So, general funds are the basic operating fund of the village. It contains the highest revenues and expenditures of any of our funds. Fiscal year 21 general fund revenues are budgeted at $11,868,000 versus expenditures of $11,642,000, resulting in a net surplus of $226,000. As shown in the pie chart to the right, the top three revenues being sales tax, property tax, and state income tax make up nearly 80% of general fund revenues. We'll go through those briefly in a few minutes. The budget process allows for the village the opportunity to carefully account for public funds, to manage municipal finances wisely, and plan for funding of services and facilities required by the public. The graph to the left shows how the village plans to expend the limited general fund resources available. The expenditures in the top three departments account for 85% of total general fund expenditures, being police, public works, and community development. The desire of the village is to maintain a broad-based, well-diversified, and stable portfolio of revenues. Descriptions, trends, and assumptions are provided for the three largest revenue sources, which together account for 79% of the general fund revenues. State sales tax revenue is the largest single revenue, not only for the general fund, but also for the village as a whole. Staff is recommending a conservative increase in sales tax of 5%. The average over the last 10 years has been 7.5, but as I said, staff is recommending a conservative 5%. Looking at the next page, this goes into, we, we get questions all the time on how much a person's property tax bill is. The purpose of the bar chart is to present a visual picture of which local governments are obtaining which amounts of taxes. As you can see with the chart, the school district is accounting for over 60%. Then you've got various other districts listed below, including the village of Montgomery at 5.4%. Hold on.
Just a quick question to clarify. This says school district 129?
Yes, so.
It would vary by location, correct?
So.
Okay.
We're in two counties, two library districts, two park districts, five school districts, five fire protection districts. So what I look at when I'm looking at putting information like this together, I look at the district that has the highest EAV across the village. There's different districts split based on what all of the tax districts are in there. And so it just so happens that this one has school district 129 in it. The average home pays approximately $300 to the village Montgomery, and that provides all services, but specifically, I want to point out, snow plowing and police protection. Property tax revenues is actually the second-largest general fund revenue source. The village board froze property taxes for the sixth year on existing buildings. When you combine that, you look at the increase in the total property tax revenue being limited by the tax cap. And then you add new growth in there. Excuse me. Since the board has frozen taxes for six years in a row, the rise in taxes that you see on the bottom chart are as a result of the residential and commercial growth that has taken place within the village. These two combined elements equate to an increase of approximately $13,000 for this fiscal year. And in looking at the charts, equalized assessed value is at the top. If that is multiplied by the property tax rate, that will actually give you the property, the total property taxes, the village budgets at the bottom.
I don't want to, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that top, so that top chart then conveys that we bottomed out, our EAV bottomed out in 2014 then. It took several years for us after the crash to really hit rock bottom and then kind of start to build up from there.
Correct, and I mean, looking at 2019, the estimated 2019 EAV, it is just now getting back above where it was in 2010, which is a little crazy, so. The third largest general fund revenue source is state shared income taxes, otherwise known as local government distributed fund. The state has, in the past, and you can see in fiscal year 2018, they have, to balance their budget, they have used some of the LGDF to balance their budget in past years. 2018, that was when they used 10%. That is now back to 5%. So they, they adjust every, every time the rate changes, they adjust so that we're still getting the, the exact same amount, less than 5%, so. I M L increased the amount per capita to $105 this year, or fiscal year 21, plus 80 cents per capita for adult-use cannabis sales to come up with the estimate for fiscal year 2021. Now, looking at major general fund expenditures, as a service-driven organization, and this is where the $8 million came from earlier, the greatest percentage of the general fund budget is spent on wages and benefits. For fiscal year 21, that accounts for 69.1% of general fund budgeted expenditures. Average overall in past years, that is approximately the same percentage, roughly 70%. For the fiscal year 2021 budget, it includes an additional 3.5 full-time equivalent employees. FTE equals the total hours of all employees divided by 2,080 working hours in a year. The new positions for this year include a community development intern, patrol officer, a mechanic, and a maintenance worker who will concentrate on forestry. Looking at a longer period of time, the village has added, over the last eight years, 21.88 full-time equivalents. This includes 10 sworn officers, nine public works employees, and approximately three administrative employees. officers, nine public works employees, and approximately three administrative employees. Senior staff has discussed, discussed succession planning within each department, which includes proper training and education of our employees. We have four employees that are taking advantage of our tuition reimbursement plan right now, in addition to other conferences, seminars, and training that they are attending. If the board has, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time. That's it.
Alright. Any questions? It's kind of a high-level overview of the general fund. I know each of you have kinda taken a deep dive into things. So, we will talk about all of this a lot over the next few months, few weeks, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you have any questions, pass those along, along to Justin or Jeff, and so we can, you know, I guess I should state this. If you have any questions in the general fund that you're unsure about, or that you don't want in the general fund, or that you wanna push in the general fund, please, please get those in front of staff now, so that as we move towards adoption of the budget, which is at what meeting?
I believe we're looking at the first meeting in April.
That is correct.
Okay. So first meeting in April, we wanna be able to, you know, obviously take a vote on that, and have that all buttoned up before that. So, okay. Thank you. Anything new or unfinished?
I have six items.
I thought you were kidding.
No, I'm not. I'm not joking. A resident had brought up some potholes between Aldi and Walgreens. Is that backstreet between those? Is that us?
No.
Is that private?
That is privately owned.
Okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to double-check.
And we have been working with community development, with Matt Fitzpatrick and Mike Lupoa, on trying to gain better contacts with them, to inform them of that. But last I had talked to Matt, they had reached out to somebody and gained contact, and they're supposed to be getting those fixed. So that is in motion.
My son had that same complaint. He wanted to call Chief Phil on that.
Yeah.
Yesterday.
Absolutely.
Walmart finally fixed the ones over on their drive.
Alright, that's number one.
That's my only item.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Hey, have you noticed on, on Route 30, basically in between the PD and the light, on the south side of the road, like severe, I don't even know what it's called, it's like potholes, but right at the edge of the pavement?
The edge of the pavement washes out every year, and the reason that happens is the shoulder's soft, and what happens in a, in a lot of the snow events, people don't know it's there. So what happens is, is they veer off, and then it creates that washout. It happens every year.
It's pretty drastic.
Typically, they'll come out, yeah. It's, it's pretty bad. Again, it's pretty consistent for the last several years. They will come out. IDOT will come out in spring, and they'll address those issues. But yeah, unfortunately.
What is the reason that, that washes out?
It's because the road kinda narrows a little bit there. So what happens is, is the edge of the, where the asphalt ends and the gravel shoulder starts.
I know what your explanation is. My explanation is that the state doesn't wanna fund Route 30 from 31 to 47. They need to get on it.
They shit on plex scrapers, and they scrape up what's on the side of the road, and just push it in the holes. And, you know, they don't put new stuff in, and they don't roll it and pack it. It's loose gravel.
Geez, you can turn the lights off, too, while we're still here?
Right.
Alright, anything else? Future meetings. Our next village board meeting is going to be Monday, March 9th at 7:00 PM in this room, and I think we'll have intergovernmental that evening as well, correct? Yep, there you go. Alright, no executive session. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yeah.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
For adjourn. Thank you.